Call this meeting with the Harriman City Council, June 11th, 2019 to order. Before we get started, we'll have a prayer of a Councilman Wright followed by a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Councilman Wright?
Would you want us to pray? Our heavenly Father, we thank you again for all the blessings that you have provided for us and for allowing us to once again gather on behalf of our citizens. Father, may we continue to seek your divine guidance as we pursue initiatives for our city. May each council member seek your guidance as we take actions on the matters at hand tonight. Father, we ask and pray for a special blessing on our ongoing war against the sale and use of illegal drugs. Help us in our effort to restore pride among our people and to treat each other with respect towards Christ and before sin.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the real please.
Derek Cook.
Here.
Betty Holly.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Kenyon Mead.
Here.
Sam Russell.
Here.
Lonnie Wright.
Here. To declare a quorum. A motion to approve the minutes of May 21st meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly?
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the real please.
Derek Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Motion carries. Motion to pay the salaries for the month?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Councilman Russell, second by Councilman Cook, Councilman Russell, sir. Councilman Cook?
No.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the real please.
Derek Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes. Motion carries. Motion to pay the bills?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Mead, second. Second by Councilman Holly. Councilman Mead?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly?
Yes, sir.
Floor is open for discussion. Call the real please.
Derek Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenyon Mead?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Wright?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we'll hear from delegation. If you'd like to address this council, please stand, state your name, and limit your comments to three minutes. All right, we'll move into reports. Harriman Utility Board.
All right, so all of you should have received an invitation by now for our grand opening, which is next Friday, June 21st. If you have not received it, it's on your mailbox here, then I've got extra copies tonight. Also invited the Fire and Police Chiefs and all the department heads within the city. So, I want to make sure that y'all know about that. It is, it is form of an all-day event, but the invitation portion begins at 11:00 a.m., that's the ribbon cutting, followed by a luncheon in our meeting room in the basement level. Otherwise, the just general public customers are welcome to come in 8:00 to 4:00, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We'll have snacks in the lobby and things like that to celebrate our grand opening. You may have noticed that we don't have a sign out front just yet, but we are working on that. Hopefully, it will be installed in the next week or two. So, that is in works. Couple projects we're involved with for the county, I haven't mentioned this yet, Rigs Chapel Road, where they're having to redo that roadway. We're going to have to move our electric and water lines, so we're working with the county to coordinate that effort with their road contractor. So, we'll be doing that work out in the coming months. We do have a upcoming power outage. This is going to affect a large portion of our electric system. It's Saturday, June 22nd, starting at about 11:30 p.m. We're anticipating it to last no more than six hours, so it'll go into early Sunday morning. The reason for that project is we have a 69 structure, our structure on our 69 line that needs to be replaced. We originally got a quote from a contractor for $225,000. When we mentioned it to TBA, they said, "Well, we have some work we need to do at the Harriman Primary. Maybe we can coordinate with you, do the replacement for you, and do our work at the same time." So, that's the reason for the outage. It's actually saving our utility at least $100,000, maybe $225,000. We never did get a better quote than that. So, we're excited to have that done, but it is going to affect some customers. Just briefly, all of Oakdale is going to be out, West Hills, Pine Hills, Margrave Drive, and parts of South Harriman. Not affected by the outage, basically Restaurant Row, Rome Street, Cornstalk Pots, the hospital, Midtown area over there, those should not be affected. If you have any questions about that outage specifically, feel free to call my office, and I'll try to get those answers for you. Today in our office, we did have a joint meeting with the Rockwood Gas Department for our Tennessee 811, Call Before You Dig, education, public awareness for our gas system. Thought that was really successful, it's a good way for the communities to work together and hear our message across. And then lastly, our gas meter painting project that we did last summer, it's ongoing. We're finishing that up this summer, so you may see some workers out, and they will have HUB identification on them. So, the outpainting gas meters, and that is for our atmospheric corrosion protection program. Any questions for HUB?
What was the date on that outage again?
The outage is Saturday, June 22nd, 11:30 p.m. Somewhere between 11:30 p.m. and midnight is when it would be shut off.
Are you all advertising that? And the reason I'm asking, the people that's on oxygen will blow us. That's what we usually get, people calling and saying, "I'm on oxygen and I don't have any power."
Yeah. We are definitely advertising it. We'll be reaching out to those customers, and a lot of them we know about because we have to have them on file. We'll be advertising that on our Facebook page. The reason we haven't advertised it real early is because they've changed the date on us three times already, so. And we're pretty confident this time that it'll be the date, so that's...
What was the estimated amount of time?
No more than six hours is what we're hoping. If it was to turn into something more than that, I'd be surprised, but we definitely will communicate that. It's not the ideal time of year, but because of the substantial savings for us, we want to go ahead and take advantage of opportunity.
Does anybody have anything for this council? Thank you, ma'am. Police Department. And Chief, if you don't mind, will you come up to the podium so people that's watching this live on Facebook can hear you?
Okay. I fixed it. I know you can hear me. I know there's probably a hearing.
He's right into the live stream.
Oh, okay.
Just make your nerves a little bit easier.
All right, all right. Everyone should have received our packet for the month, for our stats and the code enforcement packets included. With it, as you noticed, the traffic controls went up a little bit the past month. We've been getting some complaints about speeding and stop signs in different neighborhoods, so we've been trying to enforce it a little more to slow people down. But I'll be happy to answer any other question you might have.
Is the dog, the dog's not here yet.
He goes to school July the 8th, and he'll be gone for three weeks. I think he gets out July 26th, and then the dog will be here.
The dog goes to school?
Well, the officer goes with the dog. They both go to school, actually.
You interested to see who that's the highest score?
Yeah. Maybe the dog might be, I don't know.
Did we get any more info on how we control the traffic locks downtown, the ones that were going to flash it?
I don't know how they're controlled. I know a long time ago, I used to take a key every night and open a box by the Temperance Building and flip a light switch to make them flash. And then in the morning at 5:00 a.m., we went back and flipped it and made them come back on. Now, officers don't do that anymore. I think it's, they're just set on a time maybe Kansas?
That'd be my guess.
Yeah. I don't know how they're set up now.
Is that something you all set up, Kansas, or?
No, we don't do traffic control. And what we typically do, you know, we help out if there's an outage or something like that, or sometimes we help coordinate the, y'all have a contractor that does the programming.
Yeah, just things that got out of whack. It used to be the 10 at night till like 5:00 in the morning, all except for the two streets, and now it's maybe 11 and different streets.
So, you're thinking maybe about 11 and?
Yeah, Philly flashes two red lights out of the whole town, and dogs flash after 11.
Oh, I just, I guess if we could try to find out, so when we do want to set them up to flash them.
Yeah, I had no idea. Like I said, we used to flip them on and off at night, but we don't do that anymore. I don't know.
Could you check with our contractor, Ms. Towns, and see how we're going to set that?
I can, and then we will also have enhanced capabilities to do that type of changing in-house, once the CMI grant is implemented.
Anything else for the chief? Thanks, sir. Board of directors?
You guys received my monthly report by email. The only other thing I'd like to report on is training property. We've been working very hard to get that cleaned up down there. Got a guy today coming to my office where we went up there and done the hot dog thing with the department. Gave me a $500 donation to go towards cleaning up the property or whatever we need to do with it. People have reached out to me, wanting to give donations and stuff, so I'm going to get Mr. Curly about setting that line. I'm up that, go ahead and get it set up and put that $500 in there. We're trying to just move forward with it, and if I don't like it, I'll take any questions that you say.
About anything for the chief?
Thank you, guys.
Portion Rick?
We had, we were supposed to have a softball tournament last weekend, the ISSAA tournament, and it got canceled due to the rain. We cut a tree down at Riverfront Park at the request of David Webb. It was in front of the rotary thing, they asked us to cut it down. I went ahead and did it. I didn't know if there was protocol for cutting down trees in the park, but I figured that's kind of at our discretion.
No, you have to go through the tree committee, and it's fine if you cut it down before.
I think I re-asked, talked about it before. I know the city manager and I have discussed it a little bit, but I got a quote to redo the lighting for Field 3 back from HUB, and I think it's something we should probably consider doing. I know Kevin and I have discussed it some, but it's something I think we need to probably move forward with at some point. The All-Star teams for baseball are all ready to go. They all got the uniforms and everything. I know that the 6U team is playing in Kingston this weekend, if anybody wants to go watch them. The other ones are kind of away, but the 10U is playing in Rockwood next weekend. If anybody wants those times, wants to know when they're playing, you can ask me or anybody in the rec department. I'm sure we can get the information, if you want to go watch the All-Star teams play. We're still looking for coaches in football. We've had real good turnout for the cheer, but if anybody knows anybody that is interested in coaching youth football, let us know. We're looking for good coaches in that department. Like I said, the cheerleaders are covered, but the cheerleading coaches don't want to coach football too, so they're, we're in need in that department. That's it for the Parks and Rec side of it that I had, that I wanted to kind of pass along. Was there anything in that regard?
Any questions on Portion Rick?
Jacob, that tree, where'd you cut that down at, down there?
The Rotary Club, their fountain there?
Okay, you know where the Warmer Laurel is?
Yes.
You know that tree sits directly behind it, the big one?
Yes.
Could we possibly get somebody just, if they could trim that down pretty low and get rid of those twirly things? Because they come down in that main fountain, and they've stopped at two pumps and burned up two pumps from just getting down in that water.
Okay. Next time you're out there, if you want to tie a ribbon to it?
Yeah.
That way I know I get the right one.
Okay.
But yeah.
Yeah, it's bad. They have to replace, what, two pumps, Bill? And it's causing twirly things coming down in the fountain.
Okay.
So... When do you anticipate meeting the lighting on Field 3?
There's no need, by any means. I wouldn't say it's not been up there for, I think, a year and a half now. So, need, no, but would like to do, yes. I also spoke a little bit with Jeff today at the HUB's meeting about the flooding issue that's on Field 3 there, and he kind of gave me the backstory on how that happened, so we'd like to do something there too. I think it's doable. I know the city manager and I have discussed that too, so I think we can address that issue as well. Might be pretty extensive, but...
Anything else for Portion Rick?
Golf course.
The golf course is having a NAACP, let me pull up ICP's. We have an NAACP tournament this Saturday. That tees off at 9:00. It's a two-man scramble. Joe Esker is kind of headlining it. If anybody wants to play or wants to come out, they usually have really good food in the afternoon. Like I said, it's a two-man scramble. Our next tournament's July 15th, Jackie Goss. I'm still, I've done some interviews. I'm still looking for a part-time position to be filled out there. We lost a part-time guy last week. He went to a different position, a different job, that is an internship, but we're still looking, I'm still looking for one guy or girl looking to do maintenance outside. Had a few candidates coming to fly up, but still I think we're looking for somebody with a little bit better time commitment. And then Junior League, it was canceled last week, but this Thursday, we're going to do the Junior League again. We have about 14 or 15 coming. If you've got some kids, if you've got some kids or a kid, you want to get into golf, and they're over the age of eight, and you know, they can be by themselves for a little bit, then bring them out on Thursdays. It's at 1:30. If they're young, it's best if you stay with them, but it's a great way to get involved in it. The kids really, I was really impressed with how well they did the first week, so looking for that to keep going. That'll be all summer, so $75, and that gets you a membership to the golf course. And basically, one day a week, you'll get supervised instruction for your child. So, pass that alarm. This is, like I said, the second week, so after this, it might be a little tough to get them involved, but...
What time was that?
1:30. And if you don't want to pay the $75, just want to come out and see what it's about, that's fine too. We'll be out there 1:30 on Thursday. And that's it for the golf.
Anybody have anything else?
Thanks, sir.
Yep. Library.
Unfortunately, the library's leaking in the end. Water's coming in the corner of the library. I'd hoped the gutter had fixed it, but it's not completely. Last couple of heavy rains we had on Saturday and something, it was really wet Saturday, really self-pitying, but everything else is doing. We're working on the tech grant for this coming year. Of course, we're debating, looking at seeing what we need the most in technology, and well, I will be applying for that in the next few weeks, and of course, I'll be able to apply that with God. Of course, it's matching, we have a half and half. Summer reading program begins next week on Wednesday. We have a magician coming, and he's at 1:00. We also have, we also have a biologist that morning at 11:00. The summer reading theme is "Universus Dores." So, that leaves a lot open, but it's a lot about science and space. We have the American Museum of Science and Energy coming, a chemist, Dr. Al Hazari, he's from UT, he's a professor there. He is really, really good. He makes chemistry lots of fun. And Ms. Rose is going to come, story tell. We also have the Harriman Police Department down too, and Full Metal Jacket Robotics. Anyway, I have the schedule, and like I said, it starts this Wednesday. We also have a teen reading challenge for the summer also, and adults will have a program during July too. And it's basically read, and the more you read, the more chance you get at winning the prize. But if anybody's interested, just call the library, and we will have information for you. Like I said, it starts tomorrow at, the biologist comes at 11:00, and our magician comes at 1:00. And it's all throughout the summer. The ages is 3 to 8 years at 11:00 normally, and 9 to 13:00 in the afternoon, but to be perfectly honest with you, you can look at the schedule, and your children may want to develop. It doesn't necessarily have to do with as much age as it does to do with room in the library. So, because we get really, really, really proud for these programs. Thank God, thank goodness, I'm grateful for that. So, have the children come in. And we also have new books, adult and children books at the library.
Where's the summer program? Where do y'all do it at?
We do it in the children's department at the library.
Downstairs?
Uh-huh.
Fort Slayton?
Yes, in that corner.
And that's the reason I asked about that. We've been fighting this water thing since I've been here, and I know we've tried covering, we've tried different things. I'd like to, for our city manager to get with a contractor or somebody, and let's fix the, let's have him go in and dig it. Whatever has to be done, I think we need to fix it, get us a price. I think we've been fighting this way too long, and this is one of our other buildings, we probably, because my house, I've done fixed it. So, it needs to be fixed, and if you can get us a price, maybe of what it's going to cost to fix it, whatever we got to do. Like I said, it's crowded down there. I looked down and seen the kids. They shouldn't be sitting down there in that, because what it does is it does the same thing that we have problems with.
Mow.
It causes mow, so we need to fix the problem. So, we'll get somebody down there and get it taken care of.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else for the library? When you get Councilman Johnson down there to read, I'm coming down to listen, so get me that date.
Okay. I'll be talking to you after, after work.
I'll be bringing my old grandbaby with me.
Oh, good.
We've been wrapping up first half of the budget for there, and we're putting in a new audit contract for our audit, we're praying time for those, and I'm finishing up some funding analysis that you requested for looking at capital projects, and we're in the beginning stages of the new property tax season, so we're busy.
Anybody have anything for Josh Curly?
Thanks, sir.
City Attorney?
Yes, I was in court yesterday on some of our property maintenance cases. We had three cases on the docket, and we got three judgments. So, the judge gave two of the parties 30 days to do it themselves before the city goes in, and one of them would go in anytime since we have the order. So, that was done, and then just a note about the TBA lawsuit that we joined with the other cities. That was filed in state court and has been moved to federal court for procedural reasons that been moved forward, so that's where we are at there.
About anything for the City Attorney? What do we have on the other case that, oh, we didn't sign the paperwork on the Midtown stuff?
I have to talk with Jim Scott, who was saying, like, I've talked with him, he's now on office recently, he definitely is. I'll get him to switch.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. City Manager?
Yes, sir. I know mayor and council are aware of this, and just to make sure the public is as well for the time being, Jacob Bennett is serving as the acting director of the Parks and Recreation Department, so that's why he gave the department a report for both the Recreation Department and the Emory Golf Course this evening, and he will be overseeing the activities coming up in the near future. As you can tell, he's already up to speed on a lot of the events that they are planning. Kenny has met with Mr. Mackey at the T-DOT office here in Harriman to discuss the permit needed to begin the removal of the foliage at the Interstate Exit 347. What we're doing is looking at breaking that into two phases. Getting an initial permit, it can be issued fairly quickly for certain items that doesn't take as much review on their part. We can go ahead and start working on those, and then we'll come back with a second permit to look at some additional items that would include specific types, tree removals, some areas that are potentially very close to the creek that runs through that area, as well as anything that we may be proposing to plant back in the area once we're done. So, those three things will be part of the second phase. We're hopeful that we're very close to getting a contract on the LPRF grant. There's been a lot of messages back and forth, which is the way the state does everything now on these grants. Everything's done online. The scope of the project has been approved, budget's improved, so at this point, it should be just populating that information into the standard contract form that they use, sending it out to us. They did ask us when our next two council meetings would be, which we gave them this day as well as next week, with the indication being that they were going to try to get contracts out to us prior to one of those two meetings, so if things go as planned, we maybe will have it on the agenda for next week, so that we can execute the contract and send it back to them. The city also has completed survey work on two locations. One at the community center to get the property lines straightened out in cooperation with the Harriman Housing Authority, and then also in the block containing the Temperance Building, the library, and the old HUB building in cooperation with HUB, so that we can subdivide those parcels out, because presently, with the exception of the one building that is not owned by the city, everything else is in one parcel. So, this will put each of the facilities own its own individual parcel. And then assuming that you approve here in a moment a consultant for the Transportation Alternatives Program grant, then Kenny and I will be meeting with T-DOT and the consultant in Nashville on Thursday. That's a mandatory meeting that's essentially considered a kickoff for the project, so that's what I'm, I'd be glad to take questions.
The allotment between Fire Department and Library and what's a third party?
Temperance Building.
Is it already said, or is it something that's going to have to be decided?
It's, we've got the survey drawings, it's got to go to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission has to review it.
Well, who's doing it?
A surveyor came in and did the survey.
I mean, are they already established? That's what I'm trying to get at, or we set new?
No, it'd be said new property line. Uh, no, it'd be set new, uh, property lines. Because presently, there are nine except for the, the entire block.
Did, did we take into consideration that the library may need a little more space to?
Uh, the library probably has the most space of, uh, any of the buildings just because of the, uh, the way it's laid out. Um, and the, uh, parking lot, uh, is attached to the library parking as well.
It is, okay.
The, uh, the Temperance Building, um, and the HUB building, I mean, um, they basically split it right down the middle, but that's approximately three feet on either side. Um, it certainly wouldn't conform with the zoning ordinance as we have it today, but we're working with, you know, what exists and not something that's being proposed.
The library, remember, needs a little more room for, for storage and get out where that.
Um, and then we've also asked them to maintain, um, the alley, um, all the way through the block as well.
And have you, uh, Kevin, have you heard any more about the schedule for, uh, Twenty-Seventh and Bridge, uh, in the state?
The, um... I, I have not, um, at this point, uh, gotten any updated information. Um, I did, and I don't know what the date is. I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but late this afternoon, I got an email, um, regarding a kickoff meeting for the paving Pinderage Road. Um, but we'll, uh, have someone attending that meeting, whether it be me or, or someone else. Uh, but at, at this point, I haven't heard anything additional with regard to, um, Bridge on Twenty-Seventh.
Can we, can we check that out? Anybody else? So Kevin, on, on the, uh, LPRF grants, splash pad, uh, grant, we're, we're pretty confident that that will be, will be in water by next year at this time?
I don't see a reason why we wouldn't, uh, be, uh, our, our target date would be to, uh, open it, um, right around Memorial Day, which is when, you know, most splash pads open. Um, we would probably actually try and get it up and running, uh, earlier in May. Um, generally with the new pad, try to run it, um, around thirty days for, uh, just operation and cycling purposes before you actually, uh, start laying paper in there.
Right. We'll move into new business, uh, discussing possibly approved health insurance renewal.
We, uh, really got some, uh, good news this year, surprising. Uh, that, um, when Sarah reached out to us to talk about renewal, um, she was talking about a proposed decrease in premium, um, to maintain the same benefits that we've been providing, um, over the prior year. And so, um, we talked about whether to just go ahead and, uh, accept that offer or whether to try and, um, go out and get other quotes, uh, as we've done in some years in the past. But, uh, after discussion, um, Dr. Curley, Teresa, myself, uh, met with Sarah and decided that, uh, we felt like with the proposed decrease of a little over four percent, that, um, it would be in our best interest to accept the proposal. Has this from Blue Cross to review, uh, at that decreased rate? And, um, I can try to answer any questions, or Sarah's here to answer questions as well.
Counsel, have any questions? You, you still have a committee made up of different law issues and things, no?
Same coverage as last year? Yeah.
May I explain the reason why we didn't take it out to bid? Um, there were some, some issues. The underwriter for...
Sure.
Oh, my apologies. The underwriter for Blue Cross Blue Shield issued this proposal, uh, our renewal probably, it had to be in April, I think, first part of April. So, we got it early, which means they were looking at claims ending probably January, February maximum. And we knew we had some things possibly going on from February forward. And if we took it back to Blue Cross with competitive data, uh, from another insurance carrier, that meant they would pull those claims up again and possibly, you know, we could be jeopardizing our position. Um, and the other part to that was we did not want to take a lesser benefit plan from another insurance carrier just to come up with these same rates. It did not make sense at all to even open that Pandora's Box to receive lesser benefits and higher premiums. This is an excellent renewal, which means the City of Harriman employees and their covered dependents are doing the right thing, um, through healthy, um, ways of handling their own personal health. You know, we're always going to have a few large claims come through the door. Uh, it's just, you know, ten percent of the population, uh, covered employees are going to use the benefits. Well, the other part tend not. But the fact that we got a renewal decrease is, is a direct reflection on personal health maintenance and people taking care of themselves and we actually have a healthier base of employees and dependents than we have in the past. Coupled with a younger, the demographics have changed just also slightly, which would give us a discount as well. And, um, I think the first page, that's Sid Council, pat yourself on the back, two point two million dollars saved, uh, since leading to the State of Tennessee Plan. That's, that's remarkable. And then, as far as the HRA, where the employees are only subject to a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible and the dependents only a two fifty deductible. So, we buy a higher deductible and then use a health reimbursement arrangement. Our utilization remains steady at about ten thousand a year. That means that's the amount we issue back, again reflective of a healthy workforce. So, everything's working. I, I couldn't paint a better picture for our client. I wish I could say I did some magic, but y'all did it yourself.
Anybody have anything?
The whole insurance.
Yeah, the employee out of pocket, um, on the center. And this is just their monthly...
Okay, this...
Marauder.
Yes, what Councilman Lee's referencing is the spreadsheet. The first column is the two thousand and eighteen, last year we renewed that plan. Two thousand and nineteen looks identical with no benefit changes, only the premiums are less. And the city pays a hundred percent of the employee costs and then gives a twenty-five percent, um, additional, uh, savings to the employees when they're covering dependents. So, everybody across the board's going to see a decrease.
Okay, so the seven ninety-five is, you still take out the three seventy-eight?
Yes, subtract that plus another twenty-five percent.
That's what I was unclear on. I couldn't, I knew the last time we did so.
Hang on, just, I was just piddling with these numbers. Didn't write them down, let's see here. Uh, Mr. Helms and I, we're discussing this, uh, as far as employee contributions. So, in that particular case for the employee and spouse, what we are projecting minus the four percent, um, would be for employee spouses, they are actually having a one hundred and fifty-five dollar and twenty cents payroll reduction. And are you paid weekly or biweekly? Biweekly, so it would be times two. Um, for employee entitled, instead of paying a hundred and twenty-four or reflective on here of six ninety-three, they actually pay a hundred and nineteen, which is less than last year, obviously. And then for employees that are covering their families, again a four percent discount, which is the point nine six of what they paid last year, they're going to pay two sixty-eight. Uh, sixty-one instead of two seventy-nine. Those are the numbers we're looking at. Um, I need to send those over for a final blessing from the office. I just did those numbers quickly with the meeting started.
Thank you, because that's what's going on nearby, ask like, what am I going to change?
What about me?
And I can't answer it all the time, because, anyway. Are I getting notes, are we?
I find, and Ms. Teresa will always have an enrollment form with those numbers on it. When they sign up, it's a simplified enrollment form with that really clear what they're, what they're, um, getting and out of the, having taken out their payroll check. The dental remains the same. We haven't had a dental increase in a long time, which tells me we probably aren't using our dental benefits and we really need to be using our dental benefits. Uh, we have excellent dental plan here, life insurance, premiums staying the same and the vision staying the same. So, we're in good shape, thank, thank goodness.
I think also, too, one thing that, uh, factored into the decision not to go out and get competitive quotes as well, Teresa, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, when we had the discussion, uh, we've had very few complaints, uh, if any from the employees this year, um, on the coverage. So, we felt like that was an indication that, uh, everyone was satisfied with, um, uh, what was being provided to now. And, and then to get it at a decreased rate, it just seemed like the best decision.
So, in essence, what the City of Harriman is giving our employees, this is, this is the, and their dependents, is, it says here that they have a three thousand dollar deductible, clearly on the first line in the middle. That's not, that's what the city bought. The employee has, the insured has a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible. That's pretty darn nice. Um, and the city pays the balance and we're keeping our office visit co-pays low at twenty-five dollars and fifty dollars. And, um, prescriptions are low, eight dollars, forty dollars and sixty dollars. I can only say I wish I had that. Questions? I want to also say thank you all so much for trusting me to handle your benefits. It's every year I say this, but I honestly mean it. This is a cornerstone account for me. It's not my largest account, but my heart is totally into the City of Harriman and I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do for us.
My pleasure. Questions?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, motion. Second, motion by Councilman Russell, second by Councilman Holly, Councilman Russell.
No, sir.
Councilman Holly.
No, sir.
Floor is open for any other discussion. Call her up, please.
Darrell Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries. Sir, would you come back up? I've got another question.
Okay. Yes?
Kevin, would you ask me a question?
Uh-oh.
She thinks she's in trouble.
I am. I didn't speak. I'm not one of those that runs through the lights. I stop at every stop sign, I don't...
On behalf of the City of Harriman, uh, I, I would like to recognize Sarah McCoyn for her tireless efforts to provide exemplary service and affordable healthcare for the City of Harriman and our employees. Her efforts to help stabilize what was a new approach to healthcare in the form of a health reimbursement program and to continually shop the city's healthcare plans for the best covering rates have saved the city over two point two million dollars since two thousand and ten, as compared to remaining on the state health insurance plan as the city was insured at the time. Furthermore, even though the city council authorized her to be compensated for administering the health reimbursement plan, she has refused payment to do so. As a result, she has saved the city an additional amount of approximately twenty-five thousand dollars based upon the fee Blue Cross would have charged to perform this same service for the city over this period of time. These savings have allowed us to keep tax rates low and provide essential services to citizens of Harriman without sacrificing our commitment to the employees who deliver these services. Therefore, it is my pleasure to present the key to the city, to Sarah McCoyn on behalf of the mayor and the empowered city council.
It's just one key, right? I lose things. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very, very much. I mean, this is an absolute honor. Thank you, that's curly, oops.
Yeah, that's good.
Oh, wow.
Let me read what the, uh, what the plaque says. With our deepest appreciation, we hereby honor Sarah McCoyn with this key to the city in recognition of your passion, unconditional commitment and enduring dedicated services, two thousand and nineteen. Key to the City of Harriman.
Oh, thank you. May your best. You know, I mean, I never win door prizes, I get nothing. I don't, I'm not complaining, but I, I'm...
That key don't open anything, but you can...
What's the name of it? I thought I was losing it. I got to show everybody. Thank you all so much. I've been doing this for thirty-three years and never, ever, I, I get thank you, but such an honor. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you and all the hard work that you do put into it. I know every year you're, you're calling to check in, seeing what's going on, uh, working with us and we truly appreciate that. I did hear Dr. Curley just say about six percent, uh, save us next year, but...
He's a difficult customer.
But we do appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next item, discuss and possibly approve, uh, TAP grant consultant for transportation alternating program.
The, um, street committee served as the evaluation committee for, um, the engineering consultants who had a plaid, uh, to do the work on the Transportation Alternatives Program, which is the sidewalks and pedestrian lighting that will run from Crescent Street to Georgia Street. Um, we initially had five, uh, firms that submitted. Of those five, three moved on to phase two and came in and met, uh, personally with the, uh, street committee. Uh, of those three, uh, following the, uh, protocol set forth by T-DOT, um, we're forwarding to you two names for consideration, uh, in the order of preference that the committee ranked them, um, first being Wiser Consultants and the second being Cannon and Cannon.
Motion to approve Wiser Consultants as the first choice, Cannon and Cannon as the second.
Motion, my second.
Motion by Councilman Holly, second by Councilman Johnson, Councilman Holly.
Now, we, uh, we, we spent quite a bit of time talking to these folks. They spent quite, quite a bit of time giving us a nice presentation. I think we were unanimous and, you know, hell, we felt it. They look like the best choice.
Councilman Johnson.
I agree with Betty. They, they really put on a good presentation and everything. I think they'll do good.
Floor is open for discussion. Call her up, please.
Darrell Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Kenny Me?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries. Last piece of news, business, discuss and possibly approve ordinance zero six one nine dash zero one. An ordinance authorizing the adoption of Sina Lane as a public right of way, which is currently property owned by Alan R. Williams and Sandra B. Williams. Kevin, you want to explain this before we...
This was, uh, a, a new road that was constructed as part of a recent subdivision, um, that was built within the city. Um, Mr. Williams is, uh, the developer of that subdivision. Uh, as part of the, uh, original subdivision plaque that came before the planning commission, uh, as is typical in these types of situations, um, the right of ways, once they have been built to the city standards, um, are generally dedicated to the city, which accepts them as a public right of way and then maintains them from that point forward. So, that's what this, uh, ordinance would be doing, uh, in conjunction with the planning commission's intent of recommending to you to accept this as a public right of way. This would be the first reading... This would be the first reading on the ordinance, and a second reading would be required.
Motion to approve. Motion, Councilman Holly, second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Lee, Councilman Holly.
We've looked at this before.
Councilman Lee.
No, sir.
Floor is open for discussion.
Just one question. The roads are all completely finished. The road put in and meets all the codes.
It meets the codes. The, there was a couple of variances that the planning commission granted on the design of the right-of-way, but it meets what they required of the developer.
Any other discussion?
Hey, Alan, just, just as a point of interest, how many homes?
There's one, there's 13 lots. There's three, which apparently is one of the houses. And there's two new houses and one already occupied.
So, so you got room for?
About 10, 10.
Any other discussion? Call her up, please.
Darrell Cook?
Yes.
Betty Holly?
Yes.
Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Ken Yimy?
Yes.
Sam Russell?
Yes.
Lonnie Rock?
Yes.
Motion carries. This time we're hearing from the council. Councilman Cook. Councilman Johnson.
Kevin, a couple weeks ago, I was going to ask you about this, but you weren't there at that meeting. That grant we had for the Temperance Building, how, why did we lose that?
We, we used the, we used the grant to do the civil structural analysis of the building. The civil analysis didn't utilize all the funds that were available in the grant, but it did pay for that part of the grant.
Were they, so they were structurally, I mean, were they taking the structure part out or what?
Yes, they, basically what they did, they went in and evaluated the structure. They compared the current layout of the building to the original plans as it was built. And so, were able to determine as a result of that, some of the additions over time are part of what's contributing to the, to the floors being uneven. There were some other minor things that they noted, but that was, that was really the biggest thing, were a number of changes that have been made to the structural supports of the building. Floor joints that have been cut to run, say, PVC or plumbing at a later date, which weakened the strength of those. Even though some of those have been braced back, the wood that is available today won't carry the same weight as the wood that they had back then that they used to build the building with. So, they then took that and outlined a priority as to what needed to be addressed the most. And then, they attached an estimated cost to each of the items that need to be addressed.
They lifted one floor that they, one level that they jacked it up or something?
That was actually done in a prior grant where they put a beam in to support it. They did not jack it up to re-level the floor. And they just put the beam in place to make sure that it did not continue to drop any further. There's a couple of interior items that we're looking at that, once the inmate crew finishes the work at the Francis and we move the history items over, then there's a couple of items, walls that were added that weren't originally part of the building that is contributing to the, to the load and unsupported areas that we're going to go in and take out to try and help take some of that extra weight off of the.
How much money's left on, what's left on the grant?
The, that particular grant term, you know, once we finish the study, that was the end of it, and it was returned to the state. It was the end of the contract term, but we can reapply for the grant. And generally, generally, anytime we apply for it, we've been able to get the grant in the past. The next, next round that it comes around, we'll be applying for it. One of the challenges is, though, that most, most of the items are, that are inexpensive are things that we can do ourselves anyway, such as reconfiguring, exterior landscaping to get water away from the base of the building, taking out some of the walls and so forth. The items that we need help on are the higher dollar items, but this particular grant has a maximum funding of about $35,000. So, the part we've got to do in the building, it doesn't go very far. So, we're going to have to seek other alternatives for funding, which is why I think we were fortunate to be able to get it designated as one of the endangered buildings in East Tennessee, because that's, that plus the plan that we've got in place with the civil study should help us be able to obtain private funding to help save the building.
Okay. That's all I've got there.
Councilman Russell.
I've got two things. I wonder if you remember, this Friday night is Friday Night Salon Ron, where they'll have all the merchants and the merchants that are down there will stay open late. It's five to eight. And I've been getting quite a few complaints here lately about overgrowth around town. I was going to see what our plan is to address that, kind of curtail it a little bit.
The private property or public?
Mostly high yards and overhanging branches, stuff like that.
I know there's a couple of various overhanging branches that Dr. Knight looked at earlier this week that he's planning on addressing. Not sure if it covers all the areas that you're referencing or not, but, but he does have a list that he plans on working on. If you know of any specific locations, send those to me so that I can add it to that. As far as private property, we're, it basically depends on whether it's simply an overgrown yard type of issue, which if it is, would generally be bringing through city court, or if it includes a structure that needs to be demoed in addition to the yard. And those are the type things that we've been taking to Sessions Court, like Allison referenced the three cases that we had earlier this week.
Hitting on that, what, because I did, I talked to you today and talked also to the code enforcer today about the same issues. And one of the questions I'd asked the code enforcer is what happens after we take the court? I think the problem is, is we've got quite a few houses in Harriman that are vacated. And I went in with Dan, looked at two or three of them that I had complaints on, and the grass is up, up to the roof. And I don't know what our answer is to the neighbors that is calling because they got rats or they got this and that because of the high grass. One of the questions I had was, can we use our inmate crew? Found out that we couldn't, I asked Councilman Cook. And you also said you didn't think we could put them on private property. But, you know, something we're going to have to look at is, how do we fix the problem? David is going around looking at them and trying to find the owner of a couple of houses. We can't find owners. I went with him and find Hills, and the owner is supposed to be in Murfreesboro. We went to Murfreesboro. We can't find him there. So, I, I don't know what the answer is, except we're going to have to look at some way to start helping the people with some relief of the grass beside them. I know the easiest answer is walk over them, mow them yourself, you're beside them, it's bothering you, mow it, but people's not doing that, so I don't know what the answer is to fix it.
I mean, as far as expediting the process, you know, once you've made a legitimate effort to find the owner and send out the notice that is required, if you can't find the owner, the law allows you to run it twice in the newspaper. That's equivalent to give a notice, and then the issue can be corrected.
Corrected as in us mowing it and doing something about it? Lean against it?
Yeah, that's what we were doing. We've done it in the past, I think.
I think we've done it a long time. Waited on it.
It's been a while.
And Helen, have we?
Yeah, we've done it.
Yeah, we've done some.
Now, whether the lane carries any weight.
Well, of course, I ain't been knowing my property since I.
I meant we had chose some.
Yeah, we, yeah. But I was just curious, because, you know, we mow them. I want the taxpayers to get the money back for what we did, but the biggest problem is just getting it, you know, we're working on cleaning it up, and that was one of the things I was going to bring up in my, my speech.